Okay, so let me call this special joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council to order. For the record, today is Monday, June 17th. It is now 5:31 PM. We have council members attending in person, Councilman Waldron, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Oliver, I'm sorry, Councilman Iveyne, we're sitting back to the floor. And I know Councilman Cavanagh was in the building, he'll be here momentarily, participating and representing the Board of Finance. I have Board of Finance member Bayes, Wendy Trob, Jim Wright, Deb Iannacito, and I'm not sure, is anybody online?
Here's Paul.
Yes. All right, so with that said, we have a quorum of both boards, and the purpose of this meeting is to go into an executive session to discuss the insurance. Before we get to that point, I guess, could we all please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which I stand, one nation under God, in this Israel, with the very deep justice of Israel.
Mayor, I request if we have the executive session in this room, since there's so many of us.
Can we do that? Can you? It looks like there's only one person in line listening.
Yeah. Yeah. No, but I mean, we can close off the chamber.
I understand, okay.
That room's pretty small for this number of people.
Yeah, yes.
You need to stand guard at the door. Pull up a chair.
I mean, am I alone on this? Because that room's very tiny.
I agree.
All right. Okay, all right, well then, I will entertain a motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to CGS 1-200, subsection 6, subsection B, to discuss potential litigation relative to health benefits insurance funds. In that motion, I would request that Corporation Council Michael Magistrati be invited.
Sub moved.
Second.
Thank you. Did you get the, could you tell who was, everybody was throwing their voice at me? I think I heard, who made the motion? Mr. Anderson made the motion, and the second was Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take a minute to clear the room. No, I think we're fine.
Hello?
Okay, so for the joint, the joint board meeting, I need a motion to come into, back into open session, and for the record, it is 6:44 PM. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to table items three and four?
Sub moved.
Second.
Thank you, I heard Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Board of Finance member Chris Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back in touch.
He looks, he looks, he looks.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the lineup this evening is the Board of Trustees for the City Employees' Retirement Fund and the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund. So, and let me call this meeting into order. It is 6:45 PM. Excuse me, do I have a, let me open this meeting for the record, I know, are you checking the attendance to make sure I have a quorum of everybody? We have a quorum. Okay, so quorum of both the Board of Trustees for City and Police and Fire. So, I will open this meeting, and item number one on the agenda is, I will entertain a motion by the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund, excuse me, both City and Police and Fire Pension Fund, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on February 5th, 2024.
Sub moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And then abstention for the record is Board of Safety member Greg Coxwell. All right, moving into item two, this is a presentation, and just to frame this, over the last six or eight months, we were experiencing lag time in responding to requests for pension calculations. There was turnover in our finance department, and some considerable learning curve on how these pensions are calculated. And when we reached out to our USI Consulting Group, formerly known as Hooker Holcomb, to ask if they had any of these services available, they gladly replied and sent us some very informative Q and A and presentation material. So, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Steve Lemansky, and is it Mark, Mark Condon from USI, to talk about what this pension calculator tool looks like, and how this would be beneficial to the pensioned employees?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to thank the Board again for inviting us here tonight. So, I have my colleague Mark Condon with me tonight. Mark heads up our pension administration group. He works closely with me on our public sector pension clients, retirement systems such as yours, and we've worked together, but Mark is really gonna be the star of the show tonight, because he, he, he's the expert when it comes to pension administration. So with a further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Steve, and thanks, everyone, for inviting me to this meeting. I'm happy to be able to demonstrate our pension portal for you all. So this is basically a tool that, if approved, will, will allow all your pension plan participants to, to be able to run their own pension calculations 24/7. I'm gonna share my screen. Please, please let me know if you can see that. Looks good, okay. So basically, this is a portal that your pension plan participants will be able to log in to using any web browser, so all they need is a, is internet access and a web browser, and a login, like an ID, a user ID, and they will set themselves up with a password. This will be programmed to the specifications of your pension plan, so what they will see is their own real-time pension information, and they'll be able to run their own calculations, view documents, and gather a whole bunch of other information about the pension plan. So I'm gonna start to show what that looks like. If you're, if a participant logs into this, they're gonna go to this sign-in screen. It, it works on any web browser. I happen to be using Google, Google Chrome, but you can use Microsoft Edge, Firefox, what have you. It's a secure website, so that, and there's two-factor authentication, so participant, participants' personal data is, is very secure, no one else would have access to it. When you log in as a participant, basically, this is what you would see. I, I'll stress that this is a sample, this is not specific to the City of Torrington's plan, but would be programmed to be the City of Torrington, you know, look and feel, and logos, and what have you, so that participants know they're in the right place. But basically, the first thing they'll see is a, it's kind of a landing page, a homepage, gives a brief snapshot of their pension information, what their benefits earned to date are, what they would be entitled to currently, some demographic information, such as date of birth, date of hire, participation, participation dates, service amounts, beneficiary information, address, and also email address, and what have you. From there, there's a, just a small selection of choices that a participant can make. I'm gonna just quickly walk through some of these. First is participant data, so a participant would then be able to kind of see what we have in the system for, for their pension data, and they can confirm that it's accurate, beneficiary information, address, dates of hire, dates of union classification, whatever pertains to them, amounts, if they have employee contributions, for example, kind of a whole history of, of that, their annual earnings, history of that as well, and then benefits, if there are any, you know, frozen or stored, or prior plan benefits, or any of that kind of information that would need to be stored, that would be shown here as well. From there, there's also, it's, it's actually a warehouse for pension plan documents. So, for example, first of all, if they run their own calculations, they can store those calculations in here, and have access to them at a later time. They can also view benefit statements, so if you get annual statements, for example, they can be stored here, and basically, it stores as a PDF, and you can view it right there on the screen, so this, this is just a sample of a benefit statement, but whatever benefit statements may have been shared with participants can be stored here and accessed at any time. There also, you can also put things like plan provision guides, union contracts, plan documents, any of those kinds of documents can be stored. I'm gonna actually do that again. Basically, any, any kind of documents you want to store out there can be saved here and accessed at any time 24/7 by your pension plan participants. So, this is just a sample, the summary of plan provisions that we, we like to show. So something like that can be stored there for your participants as well. And then really, what the, the really heart of this pension portal is, is the ability to run benefit calculations. So, I'm just gonna show you very quickly, a participant can put any dates in here, this doesn't like save or store or, or register to the city, it's just basically, I just wanna play with certain dates, I wanna try, let's, let's just say, I wanna, if I work until age 62, for example, and retire at age 62, verify my spouse information, I'm gonna assume future earnings, let's just say 2% future earnings growth, I'm gonna read the terms and conditions, which basically stress that this is just an estimate, it's not the final calculation. And once that is done, you can run the calculation, and in about four or five seconds, a calculation is produced. And it looks something like this, so basically, would have all your individual participant information, demographic information, earnings history, a calculation of the accrued benefit itself, the, the monthly benefit, and then, and all the optional forms of annuity that may be available at that, at that date for that participant, and then some other breakdown of taxable and non-taxable portions, some further explanation of the benefit amounts, what, what they all mean, the different forms of annuity that may be available. So this is, you know, again, if I wanna go back and run, say, okay, now I've seen age 62, let's see what age 63 looks like, you know, literally, unlimited amount of times you can run this, and again, just takes about three or four seconds to run. So here's age 63 now, you know, you can kind of save those in your documents and compare them, and store them for, you know, if you wait a year and see how things have changed, based on changes in your, your own personal situation, you can compare those as well. And then, the last thing I wanna show basically is, that's just a benefit estimate, you can actually see what a full election package would look like, so let's say you're ready to retire, you're at age 63, and you wanna, you wanna see the full suite of forms that would be available. So this is basically the calculation plus all the election forms. So this would include a cover letter, basically describing what, what, what's in the package, who to contact if you have questions, all the, the information that you'd need to make sure you keep a record of, all the forms, like a checklist of the forms you would need to fill out, the calculation itself, that we just ran, all the options, and then here would be like your election, election form, so you actually would make your election here. You know, pick, pick the form of annuity you want, at the amount that you want, complete the information, sign it, you'd be able to submit it back to us for processing, you can elect your beneficiary here, direct deposit information, withholding elections, and then Connecticut state withholding as well. So basically, a full forms package that gives you everything you need to initiate your retirement. So we would coordinate that with your, with the city offices to, you know, once, once approved for retirement and, and what have you, that those can be completed, and we would submit them for processing. I'm gonna pause there and see if there are any questions at this point.
Any questions? I know I have Board of Trustee members sitting in the, in the audience too, questions or comments?
What are participants currently receiving?
By way of?
If not this, and this calculation.
So, right now, if somebody is anticipating retirement, or just trying to plan for the last three years of, of their employment, they usually go down to the finance department. Oddly enough, they would speak with the accounts payable clerk, they would give her dates, or him dates, and a calculation would be done, and a letter provided. This has become more, I won't say problematic, but more frequent in these requests, as more of our pensioners are thinking, you know, what does this look like two years from now? What does this look like three years from now? With the drop plan, you know, how does this impact my decision as to whether or not I'm going to elect to go into the drop plan? And so there is a certain, a certain elevated demand on that accounts payable clerk to do this work, but also a margin of error that this pension calculator tool would eliminate.
Okay.
Other questions at this point? All right, we're back to you, Mark.
Thanks. I, I, I really don't have much more to say about it, I think that kind of walks you through, I mean, it's a very simple tool to use.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's available 24/7, and like I said, it's also a great place to store your pension documents, so that a participant, when they log in, can just have everything at their fingertips related to their pension plans.
Thank you. So, just a little more background as to, as I suggested, the increasing, increase in demand for pension calculations, always you want to eliminate that margin of error, it's really difficult to go back and correct an error in calculation, or have a Board of Trustees trying to vote on a calculation, and it's determined at that moment that it is not correct. So, higher level of accountability. Commissioner McLeod has a question. You did.
Employees really, really like it. They knew where they stood all along, the city did also, and it was also used a lot to actually find errors, on both sides, you know, instead of waiting till you had 25 years and found out that it was, it was 15 years ago, or whatever, and I don't mean errors, I shouldn't put it that way. So, I mean, I would support it 100%, I was kind of surprised that we're doing it now.
I know. So, I always give credit where credit is due, I know that our new HR director identified this as a more emerging need, you know, we certainly consulted with our comptroller, John Monks, and the more that we looked at it, the more sense that it made for us. Our HR director, Denise Karpuski, is in the back row there, did organize a presentation for the union leadership to participate in, and in that meeting, and I don't wanna speak for you, Denise, but I, the overwhelming feedback to us was that this was a good thing and generally welcomed. So if there are no other questions on the presentation, then I'm gonna move into the action piece of this. So this will require a vote, and I'll do this, I guess, do I do it separately? One from each? I could do it one, everybody in? Okay, good. All right, so the motion I'm looking for is combined, the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund and the Board of Trustees of the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund, to authorize a mayor to sign an engagement letter dated April 16th, 2024, from Hooker Holcomb, now USI Consulting Group, for enhanced pension administration services at the rates described therein, and these will be funded through the pension plan, but for all of the pensioned employees, those administration expenses are factored into the annual contribution that the city has to make to the fund. So, it isn't going to overburden the pension fund there, it will be factored into our calculation. Motion? Do I have a motion? I see Commissioner McLeod's hand up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. Floor is open for questions or comments before I call that motion. Seeing and hearing none, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. There being no further business before the Board of Trustees, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you all very much, and I'm sorry we made you wait in the hall so long. All right. Next. Thank you, Steve and Mark, I think I lost him, Mark has went off already, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. We're gonna move right into the next event on our lineup this evening is a public hearing. So, this, purpose of this public hearing, oh, for the record, public hearing, it is 7:04 PM. The purpose of this public hearing is for the presentation of the fiscal year 2018 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, SC 1814301, Housing Rehabilitation Closeout, by Peter Testa of A&amp;E Services Group LLC. So, this, the purpose of this is to close out FY 2018 Small Cities Block Grant Program. Before we open for public comment, do you want to read the notice into the record, please?
Yes, Mayor. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June 17th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Torrington City Hall Auditorium at 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to discuss the closeout of the fiscal year 2018 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of the public hearing is to review the 2018 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, and solicit citizen input regarding economic and community development. If you're unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to the mayor's office, or you may telephone 489-2228. Information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday to Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Thursday, and 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Friday. The City of Torrington promotes fair housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income households, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender identity or expression, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, or physical, mental disability, or sexual orientation. All are encouraged to attend. The public hearing is accessible to the handicapped. Any non-English speaking persons or disabled persons requiring special assistance should contact Kevin Gillette, ADA Coordinator, at 489-2245, at least five days prior to the hearing. We are in equal opportunity affirmative action. This is dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the 13th day of June 2024. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. All right, so at this point, I need to open this hearing up to the public, so there's, if there's anyone attending that wishes to address the Board with regard to the closeout of the fiscal year 2018 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. We're open for comments, the microphones are on, and because it's a public hearing, I do have to ask this three times, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the Board with regard to the closeout of Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program? And final call? Yes, if microphones are on, if you want to come up?
Good evening, and a mayor, board. My name is Peter Testa from A&amp;E Services Group, and as mentioned, we're here to summarize the activities that occurred with the SC 18 Small Cities Grant. So the City of Torrington was awarded $400,000 in Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Funds, from the Department of Housing to administer, excuse me, their ongoing housing rehabilitation program. As mentioned, funding was awarded through the SC 18 fiscal year. The grant administrator that paying the funds on behalf of the city retired prior to the expenditure of all funds. The city then prepared a request for proposal to procure another administrator, and A&amp;E Services of Cheshire, Connecticut, my firm was hired. The SC 18 funding provided, was provided, I'm sorry, to nine property owners, a total of 11 units were assisted, eight single-family dwellings, and one three-family dwelling. All loans were made as 0% interest deferred payment loans. The three-family property owner also received a 0% interest deferred loan as it was owner occupied. Of the 11 units, one owner and two renters had incomes below 30% of the area median income, three households had incomes between 30 and 50% of the area median income, and five had incomes between 50 and 80. All beneficiaries were Caucasian, four households qualified as disabled-headed households, and six were female-headed households. The city utilized $201,219.41 of the $400,000. The city opted to terminate the SC 18 program for convenience prior to expending the balance of funds, for two reasons. Number one, the city had received three budget extensions from the State Department of Housing, and was informed that they were not going to receive a fourth. And also, the city had surplus of program income funds, which was required to be spent down below $35,000 prior to utilizing any of the SC 18 monies. Though, and due to the city's robust repayments and loans that they have, we were never able to bring that balance below the $35,000. Excuse me. So the total loans made through the SC 18 fund was $177,829 to homeowners, with $23,390.41 spent on program and administrative costs. The loans that were made will generate program income, so that funding will come back to the City of Torrington. The program income will be received and utilized to continue the operation of the housing rehab program. To date, there are 49 applications had been received by the city since my firm started administering your program, 12 remain unassisted. administering your program. 12 remain unassisted. Projects are assisted on, or addressed, excuse me, on a first-come, first-served basis contingent upon meeting the eligibility requirements and the availability of funding. Otherwise, the city has no outstanding grants with the Department of Housing.
Thank you, Mr. Testa.
Thank you very much.
Floor is still open for questions? All right. Anybody else from the board? Mr. Farley.
Just, Peter had mentioned that we have to spend down to $35,000 in our program income account, and what happens is the existing loans that we have out there, an individual passes away, or they exchange a title on the property to someone else, then those loans become due. And what's happened, a lot of those loans are old. We're running into those situations where those mortgages are being paid back to the city. So our current program income balance is $197,986.18, which is almost the same amount, excuse me, that, that we have left in that grant. So the way it rotates, it's highly unlikely we'd ever spend those funds anyway, because the program income keeps coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. I think that the only thing that I would add to that is, you know, as a rule, when it comes to state grants, we feel a very big responsibility to the state to account for those grants, you know, and if we can't put those grant funds to work fast enough or completely, we're far better off working with the state and returning them and positioning ourselves always in their good light, you know, that they're, that they recognize we're very good stewards of the money. And as you heard Dan Farley say, when you're sitting on $197,000 of program income, we just couldn't tap those new funds. We have to spend that program income first. Thank you, Mr. Farley, and now I'm going to do final call. Any other questions or comments? Or anybody from the public wishing to address the board? They had a departure on that public hearing, please. All right, then I'm going to close this. And again, three calls. So if there are no further public comments, I will close the public hearing. I will declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. All right. Working our way through the lineup, one more public hearing. For the record, it is now 7:13 PM. It is still Monday, June 17th, 2024, and the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit input regarding the proposed revisions to Chapter 187 of the Code of Ordinances Taxation, Article 7, Tax Abatement for the Volunteer Firefighters. Could we kindly have the official notice right into the record?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 17th, starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding proposed changes to the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 187, entitled Taxation, Article 7, Tax Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters. The full texts of the proposed revisions are available to the public online or in the office of the city clerk. The public may attend in person or by Zoom and will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Written comments may be sent by email to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to 140 Main Street, Torrington. Written comments will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen in advance of the public hearing. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available at torringtonct.org/zoom. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the 13th day of June 2024. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. All right, so the floor is open, and I invite the public, anyone wishing to address the board with regard to the revisions of Chapter 187 of the Code of Ordinances Taxation, Tax Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters. The microphones are open, and I would just ask that you state your name and address when you speak. So, second call, anyone from the public wishing to address the board with regard to the change? Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Jim Potter, 174 Sherwood Drive. I just asked that you support this change to the what is it?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. As you know, we have a good group of people in both Drakeville and Torrey Ford Volunteer Fire Department that spend an awful lot of time training and working at their stations to support our career department, and it's just a small way of recognizing that, and it's also a great tool for us to use for recruiting. So we hope that you do support this.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. The floor is still open. Hello, Mr. Kalanowski.
Good evening. For the record, Captain Kalanowski, Chief of Act Kalanowski, of the Drakeville Volunteer Fire Department, 165 Pearl Street in Torrington. I would also echo Mr. Potter's comments and urge this board to approve, vote affirmatively for the tax abatement. We've been around, Drakeville's been around for 75 years, and Drakeville and Torreford have provided invaluable service to the city. As Mr. Potter has mentioned, our members provide thousands of hours of support every year, not just responding to calls at all times of the evening, but also on their development, training, and public events as well. So this is another enhanced tool that we could use in our toolbox. I don't think I have to echo that across the nation, volunteer fire departments are struggling with recruitment and retention, so this is, this is an effort for the city to do all that it can to encourage our members and our community to volunteer with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalanowski. The floor is still open for public comment. I'll call it a second time. Is anyone from the public wishing to address the board with regard to the modifications to ordinance, Chapter 187, Article 7? Final call for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board with regard to the change of the tax abatement for volunteer firefighters as contained in ordinance, Chapter 187? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call it three times. I will declare this public hearing closed. Declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. All right, moving into the regular meeting. For the record, it is now 7:18 PM, and I am calling to order this regular city council and WPCA meeting. Thank you all to the councilors that have been hanging through the lineup this evening. With that said, we'll move right into the agenda. The first item is a roll call vote on the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, SC-1814301. I'm looking for a motion by the Board of Councilmen to approve the closeout of the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, SC-1814301 Housing Rehabilitation. Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the motion before I call it roll call? Hearing none, starting to my right, Councilwoman Waldron.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ivey.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rouette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kevin Arrow.
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Okay. That vote is unanimous. Item, second item one, entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed revisions to Chapter 187 of the Code of Ordinances Taxation, Article 7, Tax Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, second by Councilwoman Rouette. Questions or comments on the motion?
The comment, you know, that this is really a good thing, and I appreciate you coming out to the public hearing to support it. We also had made another change in the, in this ordinance that rather than identifying, because we needed to take Burrville out, we actually put Torrington Volunteers Fire Service, so that should another volunteer fire department show up somewhere, you know, they would be identified, and we wouldn't have to amend the ordinance. But this is a good thing, and I urge my fellow council members to support it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette. Other questions or comments before I call the motion? Hearing none, roll call, starting to my right, Councilwoman Waldron.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ivey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rouette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kevin Arrow.
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Right. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're going to move into item number two, which is to open the meeting to the public. Do I have a motion?
No.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ivey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so before I call the public up for comment, I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to the Board of Councilmen our newest Economic Development Director, William Wallach, who is here this evening. William started a week ago, was it June 3rd? Feels like, yeah, it feels longer. And has, I know, really, yeah, we've, it's baptism by fire. You know, we have him right out there, out front, cutting ribbons, having breakfast with some of the grant administrators from our ARPA funding. Tremendously grateful for the experience that Mr. Wallach brings to the table, and wanted to give him an opportunity to tell you a little bit about himself.
Thank you, Mayor, House members. How to tell about myself? A quick story. I'm a Marine, many years in the Marine Corps, but the most impactful thing that happened to me that will be, it continues to be the most important thing in my life. Before I joined the Marine Corps, I was in college at Ohio State, small local community college in Ohio. Maybe I've heard of it before. Anyways, I was in ROTC, was a midshipman, and an active-duty gunner sergeant showed up to do class. And the same day that that gunner sergeant was supposed to do the class, we were going to do PFT, Physical Fitness Test. The portion is a three-mile run. And so, at that time, younger me, could run 18, or three miles in 18 minutes, no problem. So we do this physical fitness test, we finish the three-mile run, and this gunner sergeant was running with us, put up a pretty good fight. We cross the finish line, and you see these college kids laying on the ground, gasping for air, admittedly, put my hands on my knees, trying to catch my breath. And I look up, I see this Marine gunner sergeant, still walking around, still motivated, still encouraging other college kids to get across the finish line. And as the pile of us laying on the ground grew, this gunner sergeant walks over to us and very emphatically said, "Get up. Get up. Marines don't run to the finish line to rest. You run to the finish line, start fighting. That's the objective. You run to the objective in order to engage." Man, that stat with me, and it sits with me today, that everything I do in life is coming to that finish line to start fighting, to start engaging, keep moving forward, always keep moving forward. And that's what I promise brings to the city Torrington on the economic don't side. Less fighting, more engagement, more profound movement forward, always reaching an objective and seeing what the next step is. So with that, instead of talking about my resume, I wanted to just tell you who I am, and that's what I bring to the city. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't know if any of the council members have any questions for a while? That's all right. I know, really. So the only thing that I will also add is, in addition to his military service to our country and his continued commitment to the state of Connecticut and to our community and his own community as a, as a dad of a couple of very young children, Mr. Wallach comes to us from DECD. He, in fact, knew the city of Torrington pretty well before we invited him in for an interview. And when I say hit the ground running, I would say hit the finish line, ready to, ready to start that engagement. So, welcome. We look forward to to your next adventures.
Benny.
Good. Thank you. All right, so, public comment, we are still open. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? All right, we're going to move into item three. I'm going to take this in parts, 3A. I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint budget meeting minutes for the Board of Finance, May 28, 2024.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 3B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing may, meeting minutes from May 28, 2024.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items 3C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes from June 3, 2024.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have seen.
One abstention for the record would be Councilwoman Spino. 3D, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes, June 3, 2024. Thank you, I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow. Yeah. You two throw your voice over there. I can't hear. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Thank you. Are there questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, and one abstention, I'm sorry, for the record, Councilwoman Spino. All right, item four, actually, this is a work in progress. I am working with State Representative Cook and the co-chairs of the Building Committee, Mario Longabuco and Mr. Arum. So a little bit more, more work before this is ready to bring to the board. So I would entertain a motion to table this.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Ivey.
Second.
And second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tabled. Item five, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the ordinance committee to schedule a public hearing on July 15, 2024, for the revisions to Chapter 170 Sewers.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, and second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions?
It's an exciting chapter.
It is.
Well, it builds some suspense.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is summer. Item six, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143-249, establishing a re-roofing project at the Torrington Middle School and establishing a building committee of one, naming Board of Education Director of Facilities, Dean Pergola, as the committee of one, authorizing at least the preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed project, authorizing the filing of the grant application, State of Connecticut Form ED049, for a total project estimate of $4,431,152.13, and authorizing the city of Torrington, authorizing the city of Torrington's cost share of approximately 25% after-school construction grant reimbursement to be funded through a authorized bond amount of $700,000, and the balance of bonded project funds from Phase 1 of the TMS roof repairs held in Fund 320. It's a muffle. That's a motion. Is anyone willing to make that?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second you.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, and seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow.
I have a legitimate question, man.
Fire away.
When, when you say re-roof, does that mean strip and replace? Is that like a brand making?
Mr. Pergola's not here, is he? Anyone from the Board of Ed? Yeah, but, you know, no, I wouldn't ask.
$4 million.
I was going to say for $4 million.
Yeah.
It better be a whole new roof. So, yes, my question was, I have no, I have no experience replacing metal with metal. That was one of the very first generation metal roofs. Would, would like to generally know what the plan is, since the first one was such a fiasco.
Never. Lasted decades.
Yeah. So this is Phase 2.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see anyone from the board. Yeah, I don't know that he knows anything about the roof project. So, nobody from the So, nobody from the current Board of Education is on the call. I'll do my best to fill in. So this is Phase 2. You'll recall in 2020, the, a portion of the roof was completed. And shortly after that roof was replaced, repaired, they identified the urgent need to complete the rest of it. At that point, we still had $700,000 of bond authorization for windows at the middle school. The Board of Education utilized ARPA funds and freed up the $700,000 so that the second phase of the roof repairs could be funded through that second bond authorization. I do know that the Board of Education had done quite a bit of research on some skim coat, some, some shoring up and replacement of a portion of the roof, and then a full-blown roof replacement. And
I mean, that's where the project is at, right? Don't want a full?
No, this is not a full replacement. This is that middle, that middle replacement, which came with like a 25-year warranty. Roof replacement was like a 50-year warranty.
I'm a little confused. Are you, are we approving $700,000 tonight?
No, you're approving the appointment of a building committee of one, so that Dean Pergola can start working with the engineered plans and start an application, State Department.
Yeah, could I just make a?
Please, yeah.
Just will come in front of the council for final approval? If that's ultimately, will we approve this? Fund, this $4 million and change for this thing?
So, the amount is so specific, I don't know if this was a project that has already been bid, and that is the bid price, in which case, yeah. I certainly, if, I'm not sure what the urgency is, if the Board is inclined to table this and bring it up when Mr. Pergola or the superintendent is available.
Here's my concern, knowing, as you know, I know, and you know, anybody who served the Board years ago knows, there's a long, long troubled history with this roof.
Yes.
With tons of lawsuits against the city because of improper, sloppy, and quite frankly, illegal installation, not building to code for that specific design. I would like to know who is ultimately the person responsible for seeing that this go around. Every, it is built to spec, and somebody signs off on this so that we do not have, another generation of Board of Education members are not getting sued because of improper installation on this very troubled. There's a long history. The whole project changed mid-build, and it created all kinds of problems. So I just want to know that the people who are currently doing this are well aware of the previous history, and that there is some sort of line control over that process. Somebody's gonna take accountability for this so that the Board of Education and the city are not looking at multiple lawsuits down the road.
Yeah, just table it.
Should I just make a motion to table it?
Yes, yeah. Yep, that would be fine.
Motion to table this subsequent to more questions to the authorities involved.
Okay, I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. I'll just call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll reach out to the superintendent, and at the next meeting, he can bring forward. I know Gail Associates was engaged to do some of the design work, but there are a lot of good questions, and you're absolutely right.
Want them to know the city is definitely gonna keep eyes on this because we've been bit way too hard, way too many times on this building.
Yeah. All right. Moving into item seven, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here, enacting as a water pollution control authority to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the pump station replacement, Evergreen and Cliffside Pump Station, to Tower Generator of Canton in the amount of $88,936. Funding will come from Fund 490 Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Cavanaro. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract to supply cleaning services to the Armory Building and Teen Center for fiscal year 2425, at the same price and terms as a current contract to Borja Housekeeping LLC of Torrington, as further explained in Purchasing Agent's Letter dated June 10, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine. All right, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and MSW Recycling Coordinator to set the following automated refuse container fees effective July 1, 2024. So for an additional 64-gallon automated refuse container, the fee would be $250. And B, an additional 96-gallon automated refuse container, the fee would be $300. Do I have a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Cavanaro. All right, the floor is open for questions.
Yeah. Question, I have, is that a one-time fee or an annual fee?
So, to answer that question, that's annual.
Annual, okay.
Annual, yes.
So the first one is covered by taxes, you know?
The first one is covered by the
Anybody has a second and beyond?
It would be the second, so if somebody wanted a second container.
Third.
Or a third, or hopefully not, but you can, Linda has some numbers on the number of containers that are out there.
Mostly group homes, Institute of the Blind, Connecticut Institute for Living, they have multiple extra, because they're residences who have obviously multiple people, so some of them have two and three extra toters. And those are currently the 96-gallon toters. We are attritioning to the 64-gallon as the 96 were out away, so that's why there's two separate pricings, because the ones that are still 96-gallon, we're leaving them there. We're not gonna go out and buy all the 64s to swap them out.
I don't know, 96 sure seems like a steal to me.
A lot of garbage.
All right.
The other question I had was the residential, so I know you've had the online permit for bulk waste permits, and that's been at no cost. So, having, you know, I'll fully disclose it, that, you know, I would do a permit. By the time the collection came, my items were gone. So, am I, is that gonna be tracked as one permit?
Unless you notify me that the items were taken, I have no way of knowing. I do have people who say, oh, you know, I put a refrigerator out, and the scrappers came and took it, so you can cancel it, and I will go in and I will take that.
I should call you then.
And, but, you know, I don't know unless
Isn't this the next agenda item?
Yeah, that's the
You're one ahead.
Sorry.
As we kind of start diving in.
Okay, so while he's handing those out, I'm just gonna call this motion. If there are no other questions on the additional, or the refuse container fees, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, for discussion purposes, so just so I can control this, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and MSW Recycling Coordinator to set the bulky waste permit fee effective 7/1, 2024 as follows. Each residential property shall be authorized two collections per fiscal year at no charge, and B, each residential property collection of three or more fees shall be $75 per collection.
So how do you collect? Oh, you need a motion?
I need the motion, yes.
So moved.
I heard Councilwoman Ruette, and I heard Councilwoman Waldron. Okay, floor is open. I'm sorry, Ray, go ahead.
So, I guess, you know, I appreciate that you've been trying to do this, you know, permits through the online. I would imagine it's been somewhat successful. This is a larger issue, I think, in terms of changing attitudes, you know, towards, and I know, I appreciate the work that you're trying to do, and I I almost feel like, you know, we're chipping away at this. And I would imagine this is going to be a much larger conversation and probably proposal to the council at some point.
Yes.
Yes, I do.
So, I mean, some of the numbers for the bulk waste collection, as you know, we instituted the registration requirement in the spring of '22, and we did see significant drop-off in the collection, and thus the cost. But what we are finding is that, and Linda wants to read some of the numbers for '23.
So, I use 14,000 as the approximate number of households in Torrington. It's just an easy number, and it makes it easier for everybody. Of those 14,000 homes, 1,992 have requested multiple bulk pickups. As you see, very small percentage. But as the breakdown is, 965 homes of those 1,992 requested two pickups. Three pickups were 482 homes, four were 261, five 107, six 77. And the number continues to drop, but the eye-opening and jaw-dropping number on this page is one home required 14 pickups, two required 15 and 16 pickups, one required 18, and one required 22. That's a lot of bulk pickups.
Do you find that they're landlords or tenants?
Most of, the ones, what I've found, the ones between seven and 10 were people who were moving. You know, and they were just cleaning out their house and getting rid of stuff. Unfortunately, the 12 to 22 are just people who abuse the system. It's weekly, you know, every other week, two or three items, five items, one item, two items. I have the addresses of these houses, so, you know, when it comes in, I recognize it. I know the emails by heart of the people who are putting in these requests. And it's not, in my opinion, it's not fair to the taxpayers of Torring to be subsidizing these people cleaning out their houses and doing 22 bulk pickups.
Do we know? I remember when this subject came up earlier, we knew that there were instances where people were taking in items to be disposed from out of city, out of state.
Yeah, we do still suspect that some of that is going on. We've gotten, tenants have mentioned to Linda that, yeah, my landlord comes here every week, and he drops it off. He has properties that every other week, the tenants or the occupants are putting out four tires. They had one house that, I don't know how many mattresses in a four-bedroom house.
One house put out 28 mattresses
Right.
in a four-bedroom home. So I emailed them and said, we're no longer picking up mattresses from your property. Every, if every bed in your house is a twin bed, every bed has been replaced, you have all new beds. There's no reason for you to be disposing of any more mattresses.
Those instances, we were experiencing, we honestly believe that those are either landlords or friends of the property owner still bringing the material in.
Tires and mattresses are the two.
And those are the ones where we're finding that there are multiple requests, you know, beyond the one and the two, and
Yeah, do you have the authority to just stop it?
We
We do.
We do. I send them a notification that says that you're abusing, you're not obeying the ordinance, you're in violation of the ordinance, and this will be the last time we pick it up.
Did they continue to put stuff out?
I had one, sadly, I had one guy who did, and I had to contact him and say, I told you last time we weren't picking this up. So unfortunately, we have video of him illegally dumping it somewhere.
Really?
And, you know, I just notified him that we have the video of you, and he hasn't done anything since.
Okay.
So
Well done.
You know, it's kind of, it's kind of embarrassing for a resident to illegally dump something in this city when we have such a generous bulk pickup program. I mean, this is just amazing what we, what we offer to the residents, in my opinion.
It's such a minority in terms of the abuse. You are addressing it individually.
Yep.
You know, I'm not a big, we are, we have a high mill rate, people, one of the advantages of being in Torrington as a taxpayer, property owner, is that you do have this service. You know, I liked the online program. I mean, no, where you came up with like two, you know?
Most municipalities that we've surveyed do provide two free pickups per year.
Do like a spring and a fall, very similar to our yard wastes.
Yeah, a lot of them will do, May is yard waste month, I mean, is, you know, bulk pickup month, you put your stuff out in May, and October. And it's just twice a year, and they don't care. You know, if you have something in June or July, it doesn't matter, they're not gonna come out and get it. They do two separate pickups a year, and that's it. We would offer two at the homeowner's convenience at no cost, but then if there's more, then we could schedule it for them. And I think what that would do, hopefully what that would do, would be to encourage people to save up their bulk items, instead of having a truck going out there every week, every week, every week. If we can get them, you know, once a month, that just saves, it's just, it's a win-win for the environment, for everything.
Does that become ugly, though, as they're stockpiling outside possibly?
Well, you know, unfortunately, you are going to have to figure out how to address that. If they're going to start doing that, we may have a situation where we have the garbage company go pick it up and send them an invoice for it.
Okay.
And then if they don't pay the invoice, then it would become a lien on their property. So there are, you know, avenues to pursue, we just haven't talked that through yet.
Okay, and tires and mattresses, why aren't we just charging for those?
That's another part of our discussion that's that's another part of our
You know, it's, you know, right now, the way the ordinance and the regulations are written, and a property owner or tenant can put out four tires a week.
Let me say a month.
But yeah, it just gets to be that repetitive. I mean, there are communities that do charge. There's communities that if you put out a mattress and/or a box spring, it's $35 if they pick it up, but you can bring it to the transfer station for free. It doesn't cost the resident anything, and that is another program we're looking at with Buy Buy Mattress. So, there's communities that charge the $75, that you get nothing free. You want a bulk pickup? You pay $75 for each individual one. So, you know, what communities do kind of runs the gamut. We kind of looked at it from a perspective, and maybe the number isn't two, if you wanted to start out at a higher number, say four, so that gives you like one a quarter. Is because of the majority of the people and property owners and/or tenants are one or two, that's kind of why we settled on that two free, was because the majority, and therefore it would not affect the majority of the people that use the system. They use it responsibly, they need to get rid of the sofa, dining room chair, you know, they change their matches, they use it responsibly. We start getting into the, you know, fours and fives and sixes and sevens, 22. You know, in my eyes, that's abuse. And that is what we're trying to curtail, as Linda said.
I just, you know, part of me feels like, why not just wait until you're larger, rather than chipping away at, you know, at some of these fines, you know? rather than chipping away at, you know, at some of these fines, you know? You're, I know you're preparing something much larger to consider. Why not just wait until you?
Well, I think it's easier to implement programs in smaller baby steps. The bulk waste pickup request form, you know, people were up in arms about it at first. Why don't you just pick it up anymore? I said to them, you know, this is, it's being abused by people and why should you as the taxpayer pay for the out-of-town property owner bringing his items to Torrington or her items to Torrington and you're paying to dispose of them? And then everyone started going, oh, this is beneficial to us. And now I get, when I get, I would say ninety percent of the bulk pickup requests I get in the comments section says, thank you for doing this, thank you for doing this. Because you could see the numbers dropping. I mean, I believe twenty-twenty-two, we picked up forty-five hundred mattresses.
Well, close to five thousand.
Almost five thousand and we're down to.
We'll probably be around twenty-nine hundred this year.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big drop. And if we, and if we can get the mattress council and people to drop off their mattresses where they can be recycled, that's a whole nother large item out of the waste stream. And mattresses are huge and most mattresses are recyclable. And we're throwing them in landfills instead of recycling them because we don't have the programs in place to recycle them yet. So to make small steps, I think, is a lot more palatable to the community. They don't push back as much if you just suddenly go in and say, all right, you're going to pay for your bulk pickup. You're going to, you're going to have to drop your mattresses off. You're not going to, we're not going to pick up tires anymore, you got to do the, I'm sorry, Mayor Carbone's house is going to be pelted and egg bombed on. The people will be up in arms, but if you do it in incremental steps, they get used to it.
Oh, I was talking to Councilman Iveyne about it. Yes, it was probably one of the largest public hearings that we were in. So I'm going to go ahead and approve this. I was a question, I know something bigger is coming and education, I think, is also going to be critical whenever that proposal comes around.
Do we have a fine for dumping?
Unfortunately, we don't. If, if you can catch the person, it's up to the police to institute the fine. Catching somebody illegal dumping is.
So illegal dumping is a violation of the ordinance and there is a fine, it's a hundred dollars a day. But it's being catching them, approving it, and then it's an enforcement action by the police department.
Okay.
Whereas we're hoping to take this seventy-five dollar fee out of the fine structure and put it into a fee structure so that when the resident calls for their fourth pickup or their fifth pickup, they pay their, they pay it ahead of time and then we schedule the pickup. It's not, it's not, it's proactive instead of reactive.
And I think part of it is additionally to the education as well. You know, so every day we have trucks on the road, USA has trucks on the road picking up bulk waste. If we can get people to understand and do it in much larger quantities, we're not denying the pickup, less often in larger quantities. We have, it's more efficient, we have less trucks on the road, so there's less diesel emissions, there's, you know, which is better for the environment, you know, as a whole. So it's, it's, it's kind of looking at it, the whole thing holistically. And what are, you know, the other benefits of not having these trucks on the road every single day throughout the city?
Is there kind of like, is there like a finite set of dump sites that these people are using or relatively, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, there's those, we have a couple of hotspots, Lover's Lane.
Lover's Lane for tires. Yeah, but luckily we have a couple of wonderful residents who live at the Lover's Lane condos who go out there and drag them up to the road. And I call our wonderful street department and say, hey, they got eight tires that somebody dumped and our guys go over there and they pick them up. And kudos to our street department because Tim and Steve are phenomenal helps with any illegal dumping.
But it's not like four or five where there, people are just constantly putting out.
It's random. I had one call today, that's the first time I've had a call, other than, you know, the Lover's Lane area, unfortunately. It was, that's the only time I've, I don't get, we don't have like specific spots that are.
I think though.
If it was, you know, put a camera there.
Yeah. Absolutely, and I think those cameras are so much more, the technology is so much finer. You actually get to read a license plate. Yeah, you know, and I think that historically what we'd find is those dumping sites, when you say Lover's Lane, you know, they're in the areas that are a little more remote, but near neighboring towns, which are, which tells me it is not our residents putting their bulk waste in their car and driving it to Lover's Lane. It's somebody from Goshen or Litchfield or Winchester that's driving it to Lover's Lane. So, and again, you know, this is a challenge that we have because our taxpayers that are abiding by the rules and being responsible filling out those permits, you know, in fairness to them, that somebody else who's driving up from Waterbury and throwing their stuff on somebody else's front lawn is a problem.
I would beg to differ that it's not Waterbury because Waterbury picks up everything. You might have Watertown, Oakville, Thomason, but Waterbury picks up everything.
So I have a question that was, that was brought to my attention also with regard to the number of calls because I'm thinking of one particular neighbor that sends us emails on a monthly basis. And it isn't his bulk waste that he's looking to have picked up.
Yes.
Is this somebody?
We could get the few individuals that rove the city and, you know, and he really brings to our attentions, like these larger piles, which may be house cleanouts, you know, which is something that we probably need to address at some point.
So the question, the question being asked though, so for that neighbor who's reporting the house across the street or down the road, if he makes four phone calls, but it's not his trash, it's his neighbor's trash, how will we handle those?
All the bulk pickups get recorded to.
The address.
Address where the pickup is. So when our friend calls us and says that there's bulk across the street or that gets recorded to the address where it is.
Okay, so, and with a condo association, I think that a lot of those management, you know, they'll see their condominium owners put trash out without filling out the permit and then the management is the one that's actually filing. So again, that would get charged or billed to the unit.
Well, the condos are the hardest one right now because the individual condo owners don't bill out their own form, the management company does. If you look at our database and you look, I'll just use eight thirty-nine Main Street, Warrington condos, you know, they have sixty-some odd pickups. But it's not a large amount because there's, I don't even know how many condos over there.
Studios, yeah.
You know, so, what, you know, what's it, Hunter Court, sir, you know, the, the numbers there are very large, but they also have a lot of units. So I don't have those in this, I don't calculate that in this. I've spoken to many of the management companies and said, you know, property owner, the condo owner should be filling this out with their unit number. And, you know, they get pushed back and they're told to do what they do. So they continue to enter bulk pickups, you know, where Lakeside, Harry Sullivan will put in, you know, sixteen mattresses, fourteen tables, twelve couches, you know, nine refrigerators because, you know, thirty families decided to renovate or move out, you know? So those, those are not in this data because it skews the data. Because the numbers, we don't have a good way of tracking that right now. The only thing I could do, like I said, and what I do do is I just pick one condo, you know, the first one that comes up in my database and they get billed for every bulk pickup. So it looks like they have, you know, thirty-two bulk pickups, but they don't because it's spread out for all the different units.
There's, there's over sixteen hundred condo units.
I know. And they run the gamut, you know, to the, you know, to the townhouse style, which you could actually sign the address because it's right there at the end of their sidewalk. But in any of those other complexes where, you know, there's second floor.
They all have unit numbers in our database, they all, H-one, H-two, H-eight, you know, E-five, P-seven. If, if the associations that manage these properties said to the property owner, you know, the tenants, owners themselves, no, you have to fill these out. Then that would alleviate a lot of the duplication and the problem, but they won't do that because they're at the mercy of their, their board.
Okay, all right. So that's a lot of solid waste, that's a lot of trash talk. So.
We're not done yet.
Motion made by Councilwoman Rouette, second by Councilwoman Waldron. I'm going to call it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that was just the lead-up to eleven. So this is discussion and possible vote by the city council to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and MSW Recycling Coordinator to set the sanitation service fee for each residential dwelling unit serviced by the city of Torrington at one hundred dollars per year effective July one, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Iveyne. All right, the floor is open for discussion.
I don't like it.
I don't either.
That's just, every person in town has got, I mean, some of us can afford the hundred dollars. That's just the tip of the iceberg here. It's just going to get bigger and anybody that rents an apartment or whatever, that landlord's just going to put that right on their rent. So I'm not sure everybody can afford this and we do have to get something for our taxes, so.
I would let us work through the numbers and I, I understand what. So try to, you know, look at that and look at, you know, what the solid waste programs and impacts are on the community. So the solid waste programs we have obviously are municipal solid waste, recycling, bulky waste, yard waste, household hazardous waste, we have the municipal transfer station and then the capital investment for the refuse containers. This is kind of the budget we're looking at for fiscal year twenty-four. The solid waste budget, all encompassing, was four point two five four million. Expense to date, three point six seven three million.
We still have a year to go.
And then for fiscal year twenty-five, budgets that were recently approved, you see about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar uptick in the, in the cost to manage solid waste at four point three nine five million plus. How is this compared to the city budget? Fiscal year twenty-four, the city budget was sixty-seven million, eighteen thousand, one oh five. Solid waste program was four million, two fifty-four. That is six point three four eight one percent of the budget. City budget in fiscal year twenty-five, seventy-one million, four oh seven, two sixty-nine. Solid waste, four million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, three sixty-three or six point one five five three percent of the city budget. That is a significant amount of the city budget for one program. Collection, automated collections, there's thirteen thousand, seven hundred automated collection units. We have thirty-one backyard units, those are units where the USA driver, somebody has submitted a request to have a backyard collection because of a medical issue or, so they get certified and those are handpicked. We have rear loaders, seven, four hundred and seventy-four units, total curbside, fourteen thousand, two thirteen. Additional services, we talked about condominiums. We have two hundred and ninety units that have individual containers. We have nine hundred and twenty-nine units that are served by dumpster service. We also service the housing authority, less municipal buildings and public trash barrels in parks and on our streets. This is going back to the bulk waste, reiterating some of those numbers. We started the, the registration requirement on twenty-three, eighty-four hundred collections. Of that eighty-four hundred, a thousand and twenty-seven were three or more. Twenty-four, keeping in mind, we're only six months into the year, three thousand, eight hundred and eight requests to date. Three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five, one or two, so to date, five hundred and fifty-three. So it looks like we're hovering around a thousand properties of three or more. Other programs that we offer, Yard Waste Collection is offered seven weeks per year, four weeks in the fall, one week for Christmas tree pickup and then two weeks in the spring. We also have the household hazardous waste program with partnering with the Northwest Cog. We have a spring event in Falls Village and a fall event in Torrington. In twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-one homes participated. And in twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-nine participated in the fall event. I don't have data for the spring event yet. And then we also have the transfer station program down on Vogue Road, up button next to the WRRF, where you can bring electronics, batteries, motor oil, light bulbs and tech slots at no cost. This is just a kind of summary of what bulk waste looks like. Obviously, the big orange bar is mattresses. The dark blue is bulk in tons. And you see we're hovering around six hundred and fifty to six hundred and eighty tons. Tires, you can see we're hovering around a thousand. Freon units, those would be white goods where the freon has to be captured. And then metal. So by the numbers, twenty-three, you can see, MSW, that's the trash from the green barrels, thirteen thousand, four hundred tons. Recycling was two thousand, five hundred and forty-six tons. And you can read this, I'm not going to read every single one, you can digest that information. Mattresses, as you can see, twenty-three, you know, that's always, that was always a kind of one of them numbers we always really kept track of because it was so outrageous. To date, for fiscal year twenty-four, we're at twenty-eight hundred and fifty-one. So what does it cost? This is the cost, it breaks down into services to each property. In fiscal year twenty-three, pick up the trash and the recycle, it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents per barrel. We'll clarify that, it's per barrel being one trash and one recycle, one dual set. For fiscal year twenty-four, it's, final numbers aren't in, but looking like projecting at two hundred and ninety-nine dollars per set. And then for fiscal year twenty-five, based on the budget, it's projecting to be three oh nine. And then the table next to it, you can see what our tipping fees are. For twenty-four, current fiscal year is one eleven, twenty-five is going up to one sixteen, and then twenty-six, we can't see twenty-seven, but. Yeah, it's one twenty-eight, so twenty-six, one twenty-two, one twenty-eight. Recycling is stable at forty-five, bulk waste is currently a hundred, going up to one oh five, one ten, one fifteen, and then freon CRC service is per unit. And then collection charges increases. So the disposal is fixed by contract, the collection charges are variable based upon a March-to-March CPI. And then this is just kind of a graph to see where the historical trend is going. And this kind of projects out to the last year of our current contract, pushing over four point five million dollars. Here's what other towns around are paying for subscription service. Arlington is, Heather corrected me and says it's ninety-nine dollars.
I said it was ninety-eight or ninety-nine.
And that's per quarter, so that's right around four hundred dollars a year. Goshen, and you can see, I'm looking to read, you have the paperwork. So that's kind of solid waste by the numbers. And so we will entertain any questions on the data. We did want to put this out there and we understand that, you know, that this is presented for discussion purposes and potentially a vote, but that this is presented for discussion purposes and, and potentially a vote, but, um, we need you to understand what it costs.
So, um, so I would only add to that, and I'm, I'm hearing a reluctance to, um, take any action on this this evening. I mean, obviously you've given a lot of data. Um, so I found it interesting this morning when I picked up my, um, rep am. Woodbury has, um, just moved to a pay-as-you-throw program. Um, this was, that was the meeting where two hundred angry people didn't want to talk about buying bags. Um, eh, when Ray, uh, came to me and said he wanted to make this presentation to the council, um, it was right on the heels of my telling or asking Ray, telling, asking, um, that we need to find one point one million dollars to cut out of our budget. Um, and so what do we recognize? We recognize that our mill rate is very high. And obviously this is a tax. There's no other way to, you know, call it. But it is direct, it is, can be quantified directly related to the service that is being provided. So I just want to leave those thoughts for the council when you're thinking about this. And we can revisit the discussion. Um, I'm sure all of your emails will be flooded after the, um, public gets wind of this conversation. But I, I recognize that solid waste, curbside pickup, um, and, um, consumer responsibility are overwhelming conversations we must have.
And to extrapolate on that, Marin, you know, we've been through, we're in the third iteration of cuts that I've presented to you, and I will present to you and the budget manager the next round. Um, we have cut out of Public Works, you know, we have eleven budgets, approximately two million dollars.
Right.
And the majority of that is capital. Because that's the only place that we really have any way to cut to meet your directives.
Wow.
The finance and, and the city council and, you know, and, and.
I have a big shoulder and I'll take that, but.
Not, not your personal director, but, um, if you were to do the hundred dollar sanitation service fee, would generate an offset of approximately one point five million dollars. And then we were not looking to institute it until fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
All right. I know it's getting late and this board has had Elon on its plate this evening. So if there are no questions, um, you know, we'll let them ruminate on this and bring it back up in a future meeting? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'm hearing public hearing. Yikes. I'll schedule that one while I'm on vacation.
Large issue.
The acting mayor can do it.
Well, we'll make sure you're back.
Oh, good. Um, yeah, I know, I know this is touchy. I, I, I agree, it, always a conflict in having these conversations. But, um, they're ha- they're happening all across the state, all across the nation. All right, um, with that said, we're going to move into item twelve. I'll entertain a motion by the city council. No, well, it said possible vote. It said discussion, possible vote. So I'm not even going to ask if there's a.
All right, thanks.
Uh, unless there's somebody wanting to make a motion.
No.
Good. All right.
This requires a larger conversation with.
I agree.
And, you know, when we did the pay-as-you-throw, this is the only thing I have to say, we were one of the first cities, you know, that was really looking at that proposal. Now you do read and see different, you know, towns doing something. I wouldn't compare us with Woodbury, but, um, you know, I think there are more and more cities based on the cost of, of, um, recycling and solid rate, whatever it is. But it's, it's got, the public's got to be a part of it. And a part of the education and certainly a part of the decision.
I, you know, I, I think, uh, the public has a misperception that throwing away garbage is free.
Yeah.
And, you know, when I go around and on recycling collection nights, it is not being utilized.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, one out of five cans are, are, are not using the recycling container. That's disappointing when there's a big cost savings there. If we could do something like separate out the trash fees from the property tax so that, uh, people see that there's a fee involved and, uh, that gives them something to watch. It is truly a fee and a cost to our city. And that if, and increase to it would be an increase to that, uh, just like any other fee, uh, homeowners would incur, whether it's a sanitation, um, waste treatment plant, uh, fee, or water or utility, we would have a trash collection fee.
A cracking idea.
Yeah.
Okay. It's clearly getting late.
It is.
All right.
It is, I know. All right.
Yeah. Cracking idea.
You're so hip.
So, um, item twelve, I will entertain a motion by the city council to authorize a mayor to negotiate and execute a land lease agreement for the city of Torrington property located on Cook Street. This is Assessor's map.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And second by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for, um, questions. You will recall, the council referred this to planning and zoning for, um, an eight-two-four determination that has come back, uh, with a positive response. Do you have questions?
Is this the, uh?
Parking lot. Uh, Cook Street parking lot. It would be a, a public-private partnership for the development of a parking lot that, um, would, uh, back up to co-park, but also serve some of the commercial spaces on South Main.
Sure. Yeah. Just tell me how to vote, man.
Yeah.
Tell me how to vote, man.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Say yes. Um, all right, so, um, if there are no questions, I'm going to call the motion. Are the, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of May, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in list. Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, um, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, is there anything to add this evening, Mr. Drew? I, I did, I know, I think, I'm cutting out. You have a list? Yeah.
But the consideration.
We appreciate you. Mr. Monks, anything from the comptroller's office? Uh, Mr. Farley, anything from the treasurer's office? And while not a department head, is there anything from WPCA or the street?
Don't do it.
Nothing? Um, Carol, anything from the clerk's office? Oh, boy. Okay. Um, all right, then I'm going to move into item sixteen. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting to my right, anything this evening, Mr. Waldron?
Uh, no, we're just, we got, we got the big game at eight-thirty, so we got to push this along.
Oh. All right, let's get out. Mr. Iveyne?
I'm sorry, I have a few long-winded items, Rick. Uh, but, uh, I wanted to reflect back on, uh, some of the budget meetings that we had, uh, recently. Uh, we limited a few speakers just to three minutes. Uh, some were Board of Ed members. I, I would hope to give them more speaking time to, um, explain, uh, so, some of the aspects of their budgeting and the different things that, uh, were on their mind in that process. And I thought three minutes just wasn't enough, uh, for them to get to different subject matters. Is there any way we could, uh, modify that if they're, uh, on a city order commission to allow more speaking time? Uh, especially if it's not a big crowd.
So, um, just as a reminder, that the Board of Education has a full meeting dedicated to the budget. Where as board members, unlimited speaking time. So, um, I'm not sure, um, where the perception of only three minutes is coming into play. Uh, that is a, um, charter required, public hearing and joint meeting. It's usually held the last week of April. Um, and again, unlimited speaking opportunities. Um, but, um, if there's, uh, some other, um, I guess I would have to understand exactly where that concern came from.
It, it just, it felt like it was too short of a speaking time for them to get to the meat.
With all due respect, can I comment on the comment? That, considering that's the biggest budget that the city has to deal with. It is, you know, responsible for more money than any other department. That is completely the in, the most inappropriate sort of context within which they have a discussion before the city council, Board of Finance, period. If the Board of Education has concerns about the budget, okay? They need to set an appointment up with the city council, Board of Finance, to dedicate a sizable portion of time and a dedicated career and a dedicated agenda to discuss these items. You can't discuss things, Stephen, in that context. So they can get up, say whatever they want. There can be no, there's no participation.
Yeah.
That is completely inappropriate and completely ineffective to achieve what theoretically they hope to achieve, which is to get a, you know, to get some consideration on some point. That's not the context. Most people, that's not the time or the place to do it, you know? They know damn well how to approach the city in, in a logical, responsible, uh, and, and efficient fashion to get their concerns vetted in front of the appropriate bodies. And that's not it. So I, I don't think that's. However, if someone is asking you about that and you can relay those sentiments personally from me, okay, regarding that.
Because you, you have thoughts on Board of Ed?
Yeah.
They know full well my thoughts.
So, and I would only add, I know that during the, um, budget, uh, public hearings and public comment, um, I had a number of complaints about, um, members of the public that came to advocate in favor of or in opposition to a budget. Um, and the speakers were not residents of the city, not taxpayers of the city. Um, and I, I did receive a number of those complaints as well. Listen, it's not a perfect science, you know, budget, public, uh, comment, we do our best. I think we do better than our best to make sure that there are public hearings that are specifically dedicated to allow, uh, people that want to speak to the Board of Education's budget, they get a whole evening to do so. Um, for the city budgets, we give them a whole evening. Board of Safety has a whole evening.
Public expectations for the public, not for elected officials. Elected officials don't need that forum and they shouldn't have it changed or modified for their, it's wrong. It's completely, it's completely wrong from, from a, a governance point of view. They know, they know full well how to get their concerns aired in the appropriate way with, with decision makers who, who need to hear those concerns.
Don't forget they have their sites that they go to as well.
Sure. Yes.
When I, when I was doing it, we had five different meetings at five different schools with different subjects and they were intense evenings. Each one of those meetings was three to four hours long.
I know.
So.
So I hear, and I guess, you know, maybe a little more, um, uh, thoughtful discussion as to what is the goal and designing something that meets that goal. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, just want, wanted to change the dialogue if we could on that.
Okay. I appreciate that.
What opportunities were.
All right. Good comment. Thank you. Councilwoman Spino?
I have nothing. No.
Councilwoman Ruette? Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Uh, are we going to come back with the solid waste fee discussion or?
Yes, so I think more discussion, and I'm hearing an interest in public hearing. You know, or public informational. So we'll do more talking.
Yeah, because I didn't mean.
This, this is great.
Well, I thank you. I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this up as a, as an increasingly challenging budgetary concern, okay? And, and, and you're asking us, and we should as a body, take that under, you know, serious consideration and, and, and make serious efforts to address those concerns. And I, actually, I, I was making light of my comment. Been watching Ricky Gervais too, too long, I think. Um, but I thought that was actually an idea definitely worth vetting. I, I like that a lot, actually.
Yeah.
People see what this is really costing.
Right.
Then we get support for the idea, okay, how do we control this now? So I thought it was a great idea. So.
That's it. Those are murders to include tax in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I thought it was a very good idea. Uh, and with that, as I say, go Mavs.
Oh, God, we can't end on that. Go Celtics. Okay. I just wanted to say this was excellent. I think, uh, the public should see this so they understand, you know, what's in front of us because they don't know. They, yeah, so I just wanted to comment and congratulate you on a presentation well done and, and go Celtics.
Okay. All right. All right, then, uh, I am going to move into, um, item seventeen, and I am calling for, um, a motion to reopen the meeting to the public. On agenda items only. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilman, uh, Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public that dares to try to comment?
Brave enough.
Uh, see, see none. Uh, item eighteen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.